Uh, this is the Audit Finance Committee of the Indiana Area School District. We have a distinguished guest with us tonight. Kimberly from uh Kimberly from uh Cotson.
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 Kim Dorchak. So she's been with us a long time. I love your reports. It sort of comes after a shock of that auditor general report from cyber schools.
Right.
I was looking at that today. It's like this isn't adding up. Something's wrong here. So um anyway, it's it's a pleasure to have you and um I'm happy we had a clean audit. So um let's start with however you want to start.
Okay. Uh well, I think what we usually do, I I have a PowerPoint presentation. Um are you gonna have that up on the screen too?
Yeah, if you can click on that first one there.
Everyone has a copy of the PowerPoint here in front of them. And I usually just try to go over this. Um you've all got the audit report, the burgundy bound audit report in front of you, but this kind of just takes it to kind of a high level, focuses on um.
The other one, I'm sorry, Randy, not the first one, the second one, the auditor presentation.
Yes, that's the audit report that's up now, but um the PowerPoint presentation just kind of keeps it higher level. But certainly if there's more detailed questions, we can refer to the audit report and take a look at those things. Um so before I get into the numbers, I will point out that we did issue a clean opinion on the financial statement. So this is the audit for the year ended June thirty twenty four, by the way. So we're going back about eight months, so bear with me. We'll be talking about twenty three twenty four um school year, fiscal year. So we had a clean opinion on the financials, which is good news. We had no internal control deficiencies that we identified, so that was certainly good news. And um as you know, every year we do uh we do a single audit, which means in addition to the numbers, we look at the programs and we test those for compliance with federal regulations. Uh the program we looked at this year was ESER. We've been looking at ESER every year for right last five years. Um and we had no compliance findings um with regard to ESER. So we had no compliance findings in our audit. So that was all good news, all good results on the audit. Um if we flip to the first page, it says fund the financial statements. Um this is just a quick reminder of the funds that we're auditing here at the district um and what we'll be looking at here this evening. Um so our governmental funds represent our general fund, of course, which we'll talk the most about. Uh our capital projects funds, which if you remember here are actually two accounts. We've got a capital reserve and we've got like a construction account. Um and then and we'll look at those individually. And then we have a debt service fund uh under our governmental fund. The debt service fund, which one of a few of our slides are focused on debt, but the debt service fund is really just a pass through, right? So the um the general fund transfers money into the debt service fund to make the bond payments and it goes out kind of in and out. So there's not money hanging off the general or the debt service fund. Um the other thing is when we issue debt, when we issue bonds, the bond proceeds go into that fund before they're transferred to the construction account or whatever. So it's just kind of a pass through um account. And we did have a bond, but we did have a bond series in twenty three twenty four. Uh the series twenty three bonds uh proceeds were deposited into the debt service fund and then transferred to construction. Um if we go to the next slide, uh the the other funds we have here, aside from governmental funds, we've got our proprietary fund. Proprietary funds work like a business. We charge a fee for service. That's our food base fund. That's our cafeteria fund. We'll look at that this evening too. And then finally, our fiduciary fund. So fiduciary funds are funds where the district is holding somebody else's money in a fiduciary capacity. And our fund here is the student activity fund falls under fiduciary, right? So we're holding the students' money uh in a fiduciary capacity. I really don't get into that much here in this presentation. Um I'll just mention here that our junior and senior high clubs were holding about a hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars in student activities at the end of June, at June thirty twenty four. Um and that was up about twenty three grand over the prior year. So um we don't usually focus much on those funds. Um here this evening, we try to focus on the operating funds of the district. So um the next slide, fund balance. We always start with with the big one. What what's our fund balance, right? So um fund balance represents current assets minus current liabilities. So it's not not just cash. Cash is a big part of it, but there's receivables, there's payables, other things going on there. So fund balance is the difference between assets and liability, current assets and liabilities. Um so if we look at our bars here, uh the first two are the general fund. The gray bar is where we stood at June thirtieth twenty four. So again, we're going back in time here to that point in time. June thirty twenty four versus June thirty twenty three is the red bar. So at June thirty twenty four, our general fund had a fund balance of eight million eight hundred fifty nine thousand four hundred ninety seven. So that's a a small profit, eighty seven thousand dollar profit over last year, so going in the right direction. But I will point out that that was the profit after the board approved a three hundred thousand dollar transfer to the capital reserve fund, right? Your profit was higher and then every year, I think at the end of the year, the board talks about how much we want to transfer of our profit to capital reserve, and about three hundred thousand was transferred this year. So even after that, eighty seven thousand dollar profit, um capital projects is going the other ways, of which we would expect. The capital projects funds are coming down. Uh we ended the year, we ended at the end of June twenty four, sixteen million six hundred and thirty three thousand versus nineteen million at the end of twenty three. But that makes sense. We're spending down those bond proceeds on the Eisenhower uh construction, and we're gonna take a closer look at that here on the next page. So if we go to the next slide, um we'll look at those capital projects funds. So as I said, in the audit report, you just see one column that says capital projects fund, but really, we break it down here into two uh two accounts added together, our capital reserve and our capital projects account or construction account. So the capital reserve is more of a long-term savings account um versus the capital projects or the construction fund is meant to be temporary, just while you have active construction projects going on. Um so if you look on the left, our capital reserve fund, that savings account brought in interest of about a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars in twenty three twenty four, which was great. Um we did spend out about a million dollars out of capital reserve. Uh general fund transferred in over three hundred thousand. So if the capital reserve fund did come down, the expenses exceeded the revenues there by about five hundred and sixty nine thousand dollars. That million dollars, the expenses that came out of there, um over half of that, about six hundred and seven thousand was the East Pike roof. Um and then another hundred and twenty eight thousand on windows, about a hundred and fifty thousand on a public address system at Franklin. So those were some of the kind of things coming out of capital reserve. The big numbers, of course, are in the capital projects fund or the construction fund there on the right, bringing in nine hundred and seventy, almost nine hundred and seventy seven thousand in interest. Um but spending twelve point five million of that twelve point five million, eleven point four was on Eisenhower, as you would expect, right? The Eisenhower renovations. Um and then another one point one um was for the completion of the admin uh offices at East Pike and the HVAC project in St. Mary's Pike. So that was about one point one million in twenty three twenty four. But the bulk, of course, the bulk of that twelve point five is Eisenhower, um which is and the money in that account is from the bond, the last two bond proceeds, the last two bond series, which were for the purpose of Eisenhower. So um sitting on still twelve point six million at the end of June uh in that fund for those improvements.
So there's two, the twenty two and twenty three.
Yeah, that's pretty much what that twelve point six that's sitting in capital projects at the end of the year is pretty much series twenty three and twenty two bond proceeds. Okay, um the nine point, the nine point six, almost nine point seven transferring in is the twenty three bond coming in from debt service. Um if we go to the next page, we'll start taking a look at general funds. So this is our pie chart. We look at these pie charts every year. Sources of revenue. So just kind of a reminder where the revenue is coming from into our general fund in twenty three twenty four. Um I've got the the totals at the bottom of the page, the actual numbers at the bottom of the page. Revenue's coming in sixty two point two million. In the prior year, it was sixty mil, over sixty million. Um so our revenues did go up about two point seven percent or about one point six million. The the big areas of increase here were state subsidies, that big yellow piece of the pie, and real estate taxes, that big gray piece. So our two, our two biggest pieces of our revenue here of our pie um are the ones that increased the most. Real estate taxes, no surprise there, up about two percent. We increased our mileage this year, so I expected that. Um we increased our mileage about two percent and and that's pretty much the increase we had in property taxes, up about five hundred and fifty six thousand dollars um property taxes.
You know, what did we raise it? I forget, five percent, four and a half?
Four. The current school year is five and a half. The school year that Kim's referring to, I think it was.
Twenty three and twenty four, like two percent. We went from, I have it noted here, we went from fifteen point three six mils to fifteen point six seven. And um so that increase expected. State subsidies up about one point four million dollars, that big yellow piece of the pie there. Um the increase, the big increase is their basic ed, base, our basic ed subsidy went up about eight hundred and fifty four thousand dollars in twenty three twenty four. Others that went up, uh pupil transportation subsidy went up about a hundred and seventy grand. Social Security and retirement subsidies together went up about a hundred and fifty three grand. So some nice increases. Our special ed subsidy went up about seventy three thousand. Uh we had the mental health and safety money through PCCD, that went up about fifty grand. So some nice increases in our state money this year drove total state subsidies up about one point four million. So between the state subsidy and real estate taxes going up, that's kind of our overall increase. Some of the other categories, just to give you an idea of what they are, other local taxes, uh that kind of burgundy piece of the pie there, six point six million. Um the big one in there is earned income tax. And earned income tax brought in four point seven million dollars this year, and that was up about two hundred grand.
Are you seeing that across the peers that you, our peers?
Earned income tax. Yes, I mean, I'm seeing increases in earned income tax at other districts as well. So um so that that helped certainly.
Try to figure out what was confident. I don't know. Did you ever get too far in that research?
Burkhammers have a switch in who oversees or it's kind of our representative. So I have a meeting later on this week with our new representative from Burkhammers to kind of ask her those questions and see if she can help shed some light on that, so.
Now, our delinquency is still running about two million, isn't it?
Our delinquent, real estate taxes. Um they're usually around one point two.
One of the questions, I'm sorry, one of the questions I've asked Jared to ask for timer is, have the number of um tax returns increased? Do we have more people working here? Or is it just the same people or?
Making more money.
Making more money. Okay, because there's been a significant increase over the last few years.
I suspect it's the latter. I just always suspect.
But if they have a twenty percent increase in the number of filings, that would be, that would be a indication that we're, our population's growing.
Right, more people are moving into the district.
Yeah, but but it doesn't seem logical to me that it's that. There's some, but you know, overall, I think more people are making, some, the same amount of people are making money.
Making more money.
So we think. But yeah, Burkhammer can actually clarify.
They can tell you. So maybe you can talk to them.
Yeah, like I said, they recently, our our rep is no longer with them, so we have a new person who I've been connecting with.
Okay, good.
Um the the green piece of the pie there, the federal subsidies, of course, that one's going down, okay, as we would expect, right? We're coming to the end of our COVID money. We're coming to the end of ESER and the ARP money. Um so the federal subsidies were down this year about three hundred and forty five thousand, and that's pretty much ESER and ARPs were down. Um actually, they were down closer to five hundred thousand. So um we expect that the federal money going down. The other local sources um are down as well. That other local source, that blue piece of the pie, the big item that was in there last year that we don't have this year was the insurance proceeds. We had over nine hundred thousand dollars in insurance proceeds in twenty two twenty three um that that kind of pushed up that that line item. Um so it's, so we're down, other local sources is down about two hundred and ten grand overall. Um we're missing that nine seventeen, but some things went up significantly, which is why overall we're only down two hundred. Interest is up three hundred and seventeen thousand. Interest income this year was seven hundred and sixty three thousand dollars, um up about three hundred and seventeen grand over the prior year. So rates are really terrific, have been really terrific. Um even the Stewart Capital uh investments um had a capital gain this year of a hundred and thirty grand. Last year we had a loss, so a nice swing there in the right direction. Um so we had some other increases in in local source uh money to offset the fact that we didn't have the insurance uh insurance funds from last year. Okay, if we flip to the next page, we'll take a look at expenditures. So we talked about revenues in the general fund. Now we can take a look at expenditures, same kind of idea, the pie chart here. Where are we spending our our general fund revenues? So this is what we want to see, sixty five percent, this big gray piece of the pie is going directly to instruction. Okay, so that's great. And the other, another twenty seven percent is instructional support services. So that's what we want to see, right? Our pie is all instruction and instructional support. Um you can see the numbers at the bottom of the page, sixty two million one fifty six spent in twenty three twenty four. That is up um you know, similar to our revenues. Our our expenses are up too, up from about sixty million last year. So we're up about two point one million or about three and a half percent our overall expenses. Half of that, I would say about half of that increase, half of that two point one million dollar increase is salaries and benefits, okay? And then the other half is coming from, I took a look, um professional services are up. Um so what are we looking at in professional services? Under instruction, it looked like autism services were up, um literacy, literacy, grad assistance costs, and a lot of that's funded with ESER money, was still being funded with ESER money, but those are the kind of professional services. Uh professional services in the support category, um a lot of security, security services were up. Um so those were some increases um in professional services. Other purchase services were up, like um I have alternative ed tuition, transportation. Those are some of the things that that increased um under instruction.
We didn't have that contract with the parent educators until this this fiscal year, correct? Or was that last?
We had some as well last year.
That's the next big hike.
Okay, so.
Last year was the first school year we had a security guard in each of our buildings for the entire school year.
Yeah, so we're seeing that secure, we're seeing that increase in security. Um so yes, student transportation up. Um so those are some of the things aside from salaries and benefits uh that make up the increase. Um if you take a look at that green piece of the pie, those are our transfers, and this kind of transitions us into the next slide. But that green piece of the pie, so that's the general fund transferring money out to other funds. So four million dollars was transferred out. Three point seven of that is for debt service. Three point seven of that went to the debt service fund to make the bond payments. Um another three hundred thousand, over three hundred thousand went to capital reserve. We talked about that, general fund transferred three hundred grand to capital reserve. So that's our four million dollars in transfers, but that three point seven represents uh our debt service. So that kind of transitions us into the next slide here.
Your current portion of long-term liabilities is about. Now, month, annually, we're paying about a million bucks in interest.
Um I have, well, now I have for the whole year, on the next page, I have for the whole year, interest expense for twenty three twenty four was over a million.
Non-instructional services, what is that?
Non-instructional services is primarily athletics um and um what else is in there? Other activities, community activities, athletics.
Yeah, athletics is a couple, you know.
And that non-instructional service is one point two billion. I'm trying to think what else besides.
Drama with that kind of stuff being a drama.
Um unless it's in student activities.
Is that where, is that like, I'm trying to think, like your trans, non-transportation?
I mean, unless it's activity-related transfer, unless it's student activity-related transportation would be in there, like anything like student activities, athletics, athletic transportation, um. Pardon me?
Is PD in that part or is it in the special development for teachers conference?
No, that would be a non-instructional. That's gonna be under instruction or instructional support.
So thirty thousands functions.
Yeah.
So yeah, mainly be.
It's gonna be student, it's gonna be athletics and any kind of community activities, student activities, um anything like that is the one point, one point two million.
Thank you.
Okay, um so if we go to the next page, we'll start taking a look at the debt and the debt service, right? So um on the, on the, we always show this on the left, we've got our roll forward. So at the beginning of the fiscal year, at July one twenty three, our outstanding debt was thirty three, about thirty three point one million. We issued our series twenty three bonds that added to our debt, nine million nine hundred eighty five thousand.
So you're forty three fifty.
So we, and we retired almost two point eight million and we paid principal payments, almost two point eight million. So we're down to that ending number, forty million three hundred and forty seven thousand was outstanding debt at June thirty twenty four.
So our total payment on the debt's about three point seven million, is that what you said? Interest and principal?
Yes, because while I'm looking at the current portion, so you you actually mentioned that the current portion of this debt is two point eight million for twenty four twenty five, like the principal we expect to pay in twenty four twenty five is two point eight. And our interest that we paid in twenty three twenty four, assuming it's gonna be around about the same, was over a million dollars. So between the two, yeah. Three point eight, okay? Um and then on the right, we're showing basically just the different series bonds that we still have out there that make up that forty million dollars. So what are we still, what are we still paying on? And I I have the date, but they're um anticipated to mature. Um so in the next couple of years, we've got series twenty sixteen, seventeen, and twenty one uh coming up um to to end in August and September of twenty six and twenty seven. Um so that's, but that total then makes up our forty million in outstanding debt. One thing that's not reflected here, I'll mention quickly, our share of the tech center, the Indiana County Tech Center debt, our share of that debt at the end of the year was around a hundred and fifty five thousand. Okay, that's coming close to.
It's paid off this year.
Is it paid off this year? That's at the end, that tech center debt's at the end. I'm sorry, you have a question or comment? Okay.
I don't think we share in debt. That's all on them. They don't have much debt, but a hundred.
They may still be paying on their building, but we do not.
We don't have to.
No, no, making much of a difference.
Um so if we go to the next, the next slide, it's kind of a comparative um against our other districts, and and that question kind of will always come up. You know, okay, we talked about this set and how much debt we have, forty million dollars, you know, is that a lot? How does it compare to your other districts and that type of thing? So this slide is just meant to show some of our other districts um and at least the ones that have debt beyond the tech debt. Okay, so the ones that have bonds and notes outstanding like like we do here in Indiana. And what percentage are are we paying of debt service? So the percentage of our total governmental fund expenditures, so this includes capital projects too, capital projects, capital reserve and and general fund. Um we take that, those total expenditures and compare it to our debt service. What percentage are we paying on debt service? So you can see Indiana, and it's always happens, you kind of fall right in the middle, around five point of our district, at least of the districts we audit. Um five point two six percent of our total expenditures between the capital reserve and between the capital projects and general fund, five point six percent going to debt service, kind of falling right in the middle. We've got Ferndale at the bottom paying about one percent. We've got Richard in the top, closer to ten percent, okay? Um.
What do you, what do you expect in the number of the year? Because we borrowed one month. I think it's gonna go down, not like a good down, or how does that work, works in reverse?
Well, the percent, well, I mean, if we're looking at the percentage of debt service, you know, the the higher payment, you know, the more debt we take on. But then as our budget goes up too, you know, they kind of work together. So as our expenditure budget goes up overall and our debt service goes up, they might kind of work together, but.
Yes, we borrowed five point four million more this year.
Okay.
But we're also paying off two point seven, so overall debt, so it's only gonna go up around two and a half million, but our budget also went up.
But your budget went up, so you might end up at the same place. That's what I'm saying, like, you know, your budget's going up too, so um.
This is a great chart. I'm glad you do it. I'd like to see more peers.
This came out of, this came out of, um we just showed the districts, we have the information for the districts we audit, but um this came out of questions like that, you know, that that came up, you know, I didn't used to do this, but then it was kind of like after the last slide, it was like, whoa, you know, forty million dollars in debt, is that a lot? Is that too much? Is it, how do we compare? And one other thing we started to look at was, and this was a number of years ago, um because a question came up as far as benchmark. Okay, well, this is how we compare to other districts. Okay, fine, we're in the middle. But still, is there a benchmark that we should be up against? Is it still, you know, is it too much, not enough? Um so we got a chart from Jamie Doyle at PFM a number of years ago. Um and they, because they have benchmarks, I mean, Bond Council has benchmarks, right? Then they they look at your debt and kind of where you are. And they provided us like an S and P uh ratings chart for local governments. And it shows that if you're, if this debt service percentage we're looking at is under eight percent, that's considered a very strong rating. So these, their ratings are like very strong, strong, adequate, weak and very weak. Okay, so like that. So the very strong rating, you keep this under eight percent. So that kind of gives us an idea, right? So um.
So it's almost like every school district.
And everybody, yeah, almost everybody, a few, a few kind of at the top there um that had recent, you know, recent construction, but um but yeah, so fortunately, most of them are are below.
And I don't know if you're gonna talk about the deferred pensions, you know, I don't remember if you get into that or not.
I don't usually get into the pension stuff, but if you have a question, we can try and answer.
I do, so we have about what, eighty three million outstanding on that? So you have ten million for the extras and about seventy three million for the, seventy three or seventy four million for the um.
Yes, the government-wise stuff.
One of my questions is, do we get a fifty percent reimbursement on the extras, the the ten million dollar debt? I know we get fifty percent reimbursement on the regular payments, the regular, the big bulk of it.
So we have, we have the the debt, like the rental subsidy is what we're talking about, right? Like the, like the rental subsidy that we get. The, you're saying OPEB, like the other post-employment benefits. So if I'm looking at the financial statements, um our other post-employment benefit liability or obligation is about ten point three million, and then our net pension liability is about seventy three point nine million.
But do we get the fifty percent reimbursement on the ten million? See, I, that's not clear to me if.
I don't, well, that that OPEB is like um deferred health insurance and stuff, like it's not.
It's just an actuarial.
It's an actuarial number, like it's not, it's not even on your fund benefit.
Yeah, I mean, we're not.
It's not something you budget for.
No, I know.
Right, right. So it's kind of.
Payments on it, the only fifty percent we get is actual pension payments.
Actual payments.
Right, the Peasars.
I thought maybe we could ask for something to be helpful.
Yeah, that's, yeah, no, that's, but um no, those are just, um they're not actual payments that were, you know, it's not like something that we're paying down on specifically, it's just an actuarial valuation of, you know, an estimate of what's out there for pension liability.
It's strictly actuarial.
Yeah, those are actuarial numbers, and both pension and OPEB. And there, those are two very big numbers, you know, that are on there, but um but what we're getting subsidy for is based on our actual.
And they ramp up our payments each year, right? They go up a percentage?
The Peasars percentage is, yeah, they, that's starting to level out though, like.
Yeah, it went down in twenty three twenty, twenty four, twenty five, it went from thirty four to thirty three point nine, but it went back up to thirty four next year, so.
So what did we pay this last fiscal year? Not this one, the last one, um Peasars.
And twenty three, twenty four, Peasars payments.
Probably around nine million dollars.
I might be able to tell you that.
And we've gotten half of that reimbursed.
Tell you that, but.
Yeah, I figured it was about five, quarter five million.
I have district pension contributions. Um we want OPEB or pension? District pension contributions, I have um eight point, about eight point four million. And then OPEB, I have almost nine hundred thousand in our contributions.
So the state has to keep coming through with the higher allotments to us. Well, I mean, otherwise it becomes a real problem. Okay, thank you.
Sure. Um so the next slide, uh after this debt service one, we get into the budget. Um we're still on general fund, but how do we compare to budget? Um so we need to look to the next one.
Next slide, Randy.
Um there we go. Okay, so general fund budget versus actual, how did we do compared to budget for twenty three twenty four? Um but this is very positive, right? So the revenues, the first two columns are the revenues. We budgeted to bring in sixty million thirteen thousand, that gray bar. We actually brought in revenues of sixty two million two forty three, the red bar. So we did better than budget on revenues by two point two million. Um I took a look at that, every category, I mean, federal, state, and local, we brought in more than what we had budgeted. Local was the biggest, we brought in about one point nine million in local revenues than we had budgeted. That's where your taxes are. Um interest, interest was big in there, yeah, taxes, interest. Those are some of the the big numbers in there. Expenditures, uh we budgeted, like that tall gray bar, we budgeted to spend sixty four million. We actually spent sixty two. So again, a one point nine million dollar favorable variance, we underspent our budget. Um I'm looking at this again, all cat, pretty much all categories across the board until we were finished doing budgetary transfers, all categories across the board came in positive. The biggest ones um that came in the most under budget were actually special ed, which I was kind of surprised, special ed costs were like three hundred and thirty eight grand under budget. Um admin, the admin function was under by about three hundred nine thousand. So um certainly positive, positive variance is there uh compared to budget.
You know, Jared does that on purpose.
Yes.
He, I noticed in the report that you said he was not conservative, but very conservative. I'm conservative physically, before he speaks me anything.
There's nothing wrong with budgeting conservatively. That's, that's not about.
Very conservative, but we missed our, but we, we, I'm reminded him fifty times.
And some of the revenues, like we, again, we didn't have a state budget by the time we adopted arts.
That's always the way. It's so tough, you know, because you're expected to adopt your budget and you don't have a lot of these numbers yet, especially from the state, you know, and it's, so it's tough.
And I think the admin piece was the, the board, we did that, twenty three twenty four was the year that we cut a principal as well. We had it in the budget and then decision was made during the summer to cut the principal. So that, you know, was a hundred and fifty some thousand or more in savings as well, so.
Savings.
Savings and costs.
Okay, so um moving on to uh getting away from general fund for a minute, moving on to the food service fund, um and then we'll wrap it up. So our food service fund, how did we do in twenty three twenty four? So this is a very condensed uh comparison here, uh twenty three twenty four versus twenty two twenty three. So revenues coming in this year, uh over two million, expenses about one point eight. So we still end up with a a net income, a profit in our food service of two hundred and seventy grand, uh which is terrific. That is down from last year. You can see last year's profit was much higher. You can see revenues pretty consistent with prior year, um up a little bit, not a huge change there. Sales, sales were pretty consistent, government funding was up a little. Um but the big difference there is the expense, right? So our expenses went up about a hundred and fifty thousand and and that's really not a surprise. We see that everywhere, the cost, I mean, food costs, right? So I'm I'm looking at that and I'm seeing sport wells invoices are up, you know, and it's it's food costs uh and non-food costs, supply costs, just everything uh going up, prices up. So that, that's kind of where we are with them, with the expenses that still, food service is turning, uh was turning a profit last year of two hundred and seventy grand, which is great, because what's, what's nice is that puts you in a position for like, if food service needs equipment, if food service needs cables, chairs, furniture, equipment, whatever, if there's cash here, we can fund it ourselves and the general fund doesn't have to subsidize. So I mean, it's, it's, it's a good thing to have that that cash and, you know, in food service.
Just suppose being used at higher power.
You will see, that cut by and half next year because of all the food service equipment at Eisenhower. It's coming out of here, and so the general fund.
Instead of the general fund having to subsidize. So that's why, you know, and I know in the past, you know, PDE sometimes gives us a hard time about, you know, you don't want your food service fund making too much money, or you don't want to hold too much money in your food service fund. You don't have too much cash, because the thought is maybe, you know, are we overcharging or something like that? But um, you know, the last few years, all of our districts' food service funds have have been doing better, in in large part to increased government funding since COVID. Um but. Have been doing better and in large part to increased government funding since COVID. Um, but that has helped. You know, keep, and a lot of our districts, they've been able to make improvements in their cafeteria and their food service programs, capital improvements without having to. To tap into the general fund. Um, so it's, it's a good thing. I mean, the, the money that we use for, for the food service program for the students. Um. So certainly positive there. And that is it for my quick and dirty.
I'm gonna go fix.
I'm gonna fall asleep. Oh my gosh.
It's a half hour.
Oh my goodness, I'm sorry. It's all asleep. Are there any questions?
You did a good job.
Thank you.
Well, you guys do a great job. It's a big thank you to, to Jared and, and the whole staff, the business office staff. Um, you know, I don't know that we have a district that we're prepared. Uh, for our audit and does a great job with making entries and getting ready. I mean, it's really, and you can.
Nicole Dacher does a great job.
She does. Nicole does a terrific job, um, and she gets everything ready for us and works with us, uh, the whole thing. And. But your whole staff from payroll to AP to, you know, Nicole, I mean, everybody just does, does a terrific job and helps us so much with the audit and you're re, they're ready. You're ready and we don't have a lot of entries. Um, so it's, we're getting good numbers when we come in audit, which is terrific. So, um, big thank you to the, to the staff as always.
We're gonna give them gold stars.
Please do. They deserve.
They're getting doughnuts on Friday.
Jared was free. He doesn't want.
It's free, Jared, Jared was at.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Anything comes up, please let us know. Um, otherwise.
Thanks. The audit report and everybody's seat is yours to take home.
Oh boy.
Thank you.
Well, I don't understand under our assets. You have tax receivables down at two point four. Now, what's that mean? Twenty-one.
That would be, well, the bulk of that is probably delinquent real estate taxes.
Yeah, but the thing of it is, is that you just said you had about one point one.
It's typically what we, we're looking at. There's, there can be other things that go into that. Um.
The taxes receivable, that two point, you're looking at the two point four on page fifteen.
Yeah.
Um, let me put it back. There's a footnote that breaks that down a little better. It might help. Let me find it.
Your tables at the back are great.
Oh, good. If you go to page forty-four of the audit report, um, it breaks down that two point four million and, and what we're looking at there. Um. Page forty-four.
As of six thirty, we accrue two months worth of earned income tax. So all the earned income tax we received in. July and August is put as a receivable because if, when we receive it, it was clearly earned the year before.
Right. And you can see earned income is the big number there. One million of that, over a million of that, two point four is earned income and that's, that's accruing those months. Delinquent real estate taxes, four hundred and two thousand, and we get that number from the county.
Yeah.
Um, you know, they tell us what's outstanding.
Typical year, we bring in one point two million in delinquent real estate taxes. That's where that one point two number is, but. I can't say that two point four, that's how it's broken down.
Yeah, so you can see most of it's earned income. And then, um, there's some real estate transfer tax in there. That sixty-three thousand is probably June, June real estate transfer taxes that we collected in July. Okay, but then the big, and then the big nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand, that's the, um, that real estate tax deferred inflow from re, of resources. Nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand, that's the big delinquent number. Like that's the. The delinquent real estate up top, that four hundred and two thousand is probably what came in in July and August. It's the sixty day, like what it was due on June thirtieth, but it came in in July and August. The nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand down below is the number from the county that's beyond that. Here's what the county says is outstanding for us.
Okay.
You know what I mean? Beyond what came in in sixty days. We hope to get it, but it's pretty knows when, you know, type of thing. So, okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Also, we have a debt policy now, Ken.
You thought, you always had a debt policy.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm thinking investments. I'm thinking investments. Sorry, an investment policy.
Balance policy.
Can we pass it?
It's on the next, it's on the same.
We will, we pass it today.
Oh, I thought we passed it. Who's, who's the agenda sort of? So.
It's a policy.
Oh, we passed, who's the last?
They did the first person.
Oh. Alright, yeah, but we do have one.
Great.
So that's better. So we expect our bond rating to skyrocket. I don't think that's enough to move the needle.
It's a good, it's a good step in the right direction. All right. Well, thank you for your time. If anything comes up, please let me know. Otherwise, I will excuse myself from the rest of your meeting.
You don't want to sit through the.
Thank you. Isn't that terrible? I adore you all. And I'm going. Okay. Thank you so much.
So in addition to the debt policy that we've already discussed, um, we had, this isn't on your agenda, but we had a, um. Meeting of buildings and grounds last Monday, right? You were there. And, uh, we talked about, we're still holding the five hundred thousand dollars in the general fund from the payout from the, uh, insurance company. So we decided to just hold on a little bit until we saw how things came out, but, um, we, the, the committee decided, Tom, that we would put on the agenda. Jim, boy, Jim was here, um. To transfer that into the, the capital project, the project account, wasn't it?
Capital reserve.
Capital reserve.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So I'm thinking that if we have any questions about that tonight, we can ask them. Otherwise, we could expect to put that motion on the agenda next to two weeks. So are there any questions about that? Moving that over? I think we've decided to wait in October. And now we think it's prudent to move it over. Even though we have enough money for Eisenhower, we still have a big capital, um, we still have a big deferred maintenance list, and I think it's important that we keep up with it as much as we can. We spent about, what, five million last year on? What, how much did we spend on projects last year that weren't Eisenhower related? What was it?
Um, from her presentation tonight, it was around a million dollars, I believe.
Somewhere.
Uh, senior high roof, the East Pike renovation over here, the old office renovation, um.
Something else. Okay. Well, if that's the number, I thought, I'll think of why. I think it's where I got that number. So. If there's any questions, Chris, do you have any questions? Do I have any questions about that?
I'm just trying to think of the, uh, so that ESCO project that we did.
Yeah.
I mean, how much, is that complete? We.
We are in the, the middle of it right now. They're.
They're doing what they can, um, in one of the schools in possession.
Yeah.
So they'll finish it up, uh, oversumming with.
The senior high lighting's done, the junior high lighting's done. Just, they are, you can tell they're in, in here. These lights are a lot brighter, the hallway lights there. So they weren't working in East Pike right now.
But they're, but they're doing it without interfering with education.
Yeah, they do it all in the evenings. They're probably, probably in the basement right now doing that. Um. But next they will, the full pack for the junior high has been ordered, you know, they are in the progress. I would say probably by midsummer, the majority of it will be done.
Okay.
So lining everybody up to the, the work that will be done when kids are not here. We start hopefully June second, as soon as kids leave, so.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Okay. So anybody else have any questions about that? Are we okay to move it on to the, uh, two weeks and agenda in two weeks? Okay, hearing none. Um, and Jared, if you can arrange that, they got motion to be put in. Um, excuse me. We've done the supplemental information. Do you have this comparative information on general and capital fund? Was that part of what she was talking about? Or we didn't know that?
That's supplemental information she provided. I just have it attached to the agenda.
What's with, um, gee, Harmony? How they get all that money? That's a big percentage of their budget. What's surprising when I looked at this? Stay with, I don't know anything about Rock. Wait a minute, what is it? Um, I'm just sort of surprised at. And this man are having such a high reserve and then we have, um. Harmony in Shanksville? Are you surprised by that? I mean, remember on what that.
They are one building's.
Harmony has two hundred and fifty kids and the whole K through twelve in one building.
Rockwood's probably same, similar.
What's the one that, um, wait a minute, what's the, what's the one that, uh, is it purchase line that has pretty good reserves? Which one? It's a purchase line here. Fifty-four percent. Support services. Look to figure them out someday, how they do that. All right. Any questions on this? This is interesting. So take some time to look at it. Um. Gives you some insight into where, I mean, one thing that we don't have in not-for-profit work is you don't really have a lot of benchmarks for peers. And so you're, she created this for us, but it's. You know, you can sort of see with some industry, banking or whatever, where you are in relationship to peer on, all these different, and you know exactly where you stand, but we don't have much of that. So this gives us some idea of where we are. We don't, but we don't have comparisons of districts similarly situated. We have to figure out, we have to figure that out. So it's not like you're comparing eleven, you know, a. Twelve billion dollar organization with another twelve billion dollar, because you're, you're, you're looking at. Different total asset sizes. So take a look at it. It's kind of fun. All right. So our next. Um, upcoming capital projects and funding, junior high roof, high school classroom renovations and capital reserve fund. Jared, you're up.
Yeah, well, real quick, I just want to keep the conversation going and on in finance of the big upcoming projects we have. They're going to hit our capital reserve for, that will, we will use the remainder of the bond proceeds to pay for. Um, I did, we did talk about the one worksheet, the Eisenhower projected closeout estimate at the buildings and grounds last week. I did update it. Um, with some new numbers and also included the Eisenhower insurance claim funded in there. To show you as of the end of January, I am expecting about five point six million dollars, almost five point seven in remaining expenditures to close out the project. Um, we have about five point five left as of the end of January, uh, out of the bond proceeds. Um, so we're doing a good job of spending those down and. As Jamie Doyle would like to see, um, we have about five hundred and seventy thousand that I, we will use for food service to pay for the equipment. Another thirty thousand in, um, insurance earnings on the five point five over the next couple of months. And then Eisenhower insurance claim, we have about one point three million. Um, that is net all the expenditures, legal fees that we've paid for that versus what we received. So total of about seven point four million, um, in funding I have available, leaving a difference of about one point seven million. Um, so as far as Eisenhower goes, I fully expect we will have plenty of money without doing another borrowing to pay for that. And possibly have about one point seven, um, remaining to use for the, um, I, the. Junior high roof, we can use about seven hundred and some thousand for that. And then we also have the potential project at the high school, um, as well. So. And then the other sheet you have in front of you.
You were just looking at this one. Did you, I didn't, I was thinking of something else when you said that. Do you have the five hundred thousand back in here now? What did you do with it? You said something about it.
I have it as though you're transferring it to be used for Eisenhower. If you want to, that's, it's included in that one point three million, the Eisenhower insurance claim.
Okay, good.
And then the other sheet is just your capital reserve, which is, you know, your second of your two capital project budgets. Just kind of going down and showing which month, what, my, how much money you have out there available to you for projects. Um, the bottom is around two point six million dollars. That is taking out the, you know, part of the. Three point three million dollar balance right now includes some of the Eisenhower insurance claims. So I, I backed that out because I didn't want to count that twice. Um, so you have about two point six million to use, um, for future projects as well. So we still have a, a healthy balance, I feel, in capital reserve for. Any upcoming projects. And that's taking out some potential projects for this year as well, stuff that has already been approved and paid for. Um, like the maintenance trucks, the district van we bought. Um, I did put, because we are working on it, I put a place order in there for the East Pike Ben Franklin freezer cooler project that we have. So it is already taking some of that into account as well.
And there's some, that'll make you happy, Tom.
You know, one time we had the fencing in there, the fencing around the, at the senior high.
We've kind of simplified this a little bit and we, we now have that capital reserve list where we rate everything as to where we want it to fall. So. This only includes projects that have been approved by the board to get them as of right now. All those, that list, I think, Mr. Sevier referred to as what. Could potentially be projects.
I just saw it. Okay, it was on there before.
Yes, we used to include everything that we wanted on here, whether it was actually board approved or not. Now, well, conversations we've been having are only to include actual board approved projects.
I think we need to look at.
Elements that we put on the list for things that need to be done, but, but the threes and the twos drop out. Um, and, and that fencing is three and there, there's a, there's a slew of other things that we're.
It's still on the.
It's a, it's a, it's an eyesore. I mean, it's been for years. I think it's for a liability.
That's part of the reason that we put on the list and then if you want to move it forward, then you gotta come advocate for it. That is a student some thousand dollars.
And it's a living, living, breathing list. Have we, we, we ranked that stuff as things follow.
Is that what it was on? It was around two hundred thousand.
It was two twenty, but I don't know when that.
I have to, yeah, I have to look it up. What our page on that was, so.
So, uh, Julia, um. I, I'm not sure, uh, I want to speak a little bit about the musical instruments. I'm not sure when we started that hundred thousand dollar budget for musical instruments. But at the time we did that, the, the instruments were in a pretty bad shape. And, and I absolutely supported that hundred thousand dollars to spend till we get kind of caught up. My question is, I'd like to at least do a review to see whether or not we still need to invest a hundred thousand dollars every year. Or whether the condition of the instruments, maybe it's only seventy-five, and maybe it's fifty that we need to do on an ongoing basis. Now that we've sort of got things.
Yeah, the, the original problem with that was that they showed up with a request for a million dollars to replace instruments. Then. You know, they have seven trombones, but only three of them work. And so, so what we tried to do was to. Encourage them to replace instruments as they failed and they saw the need and not come back to get that kind of massive funding.
And, and I still want to support that, Tom.
Yeah, I, 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 I don't think, and you can tell, you can, that they're expending a hundred thousand dollars a year. We thought a ten-year cycle was probably okay, but I suspected that I'm spending that much money.
I guess, I have a list right now for ninety-six thousand dollars.
I guess, I guess my point, Tom, is that I, I think it's time that we review this to see if the hundred thousand dollars is still a reasonable number. Um, or whether it, it maybe can be reduced. But that's going to depend on the actual conditions of the, of the instruments that we have on hand. That's all I'm suggesting.
I thought they did an inventory.
They sure do. We can.
They do, and I think as long, I mean, I don't want to speak for the music teachers. I, I think we've made great strides. But I think as long as you give them a hundred thousand dollars every year, they're going to come up with a hundred thousand dollar list every year.
That's the problem.
As would anybody.
Spend it all at once.
Yeah.
What, what I'm saying is, I like the idea that of this, giving them a, a budget every year of so much. The question is, what does that sweet spot in that number need to be now? A hundred thousand was certainly right to get it caught, but caught up from the condition that they were in.
How many years ago was that?
And that's what I don't know.
We probably, I want, off the top of my head, maybe two, two or three years complete that we've, like this may, this would be the, probably the fourth, I believe. That we have done it, so.
So this will be four hundred thousand into that one point one million dollar request that they have. Sounds like we got a little bit early to go.
And that can be a question, right?
We can look into it. We'll find out, but, you know, I think it's a good point to bring up and, you know, see where that is and see where we need to get.
And if it still needs to be the hundred thousand, I'm okay with that. I just think we need to re, have it reviewed. And then see what the recommendation from the music department and the administration is going to be on it.
But I mean, I'd also like to see our numbers because I know they were going down, but I think after last year, they've started to go back up. It'd be nice to see. Our numbers. So if we're spending a hundred thousand on, and there's only a hundred kids total compared to a hundred thousand and fifty kids.
And a hundred kids at the fourth and fifth grade by itself. Yeah, okay. So this also extends to the, the fourth and fifth grade as a part of the.
I think you're right.
It is go, I mean, I know it's gone up, but what was it when we started a couple of years ago? I'd like to know those, those numbers with, with the mom.
Your point's well taken, but the, we, we do need to look at the numbers versus the, the, the amount of instruments that we have on here. Absolutely.
Yeah, we can work on that, but Jared and I will work on that and. I have a question about something non-musical. So I don't want to take you guys away from it.
That's okay. Go ahead.
Sure, yeah.
I mean, she's. Julia's.
And so I was wondering, I was looking at the general fund expense, expenditures, this report. And so it, it kind of details expenditures as a percentage of. General fund, we're all familiar. So I'm not, I'm not surprised by the, the teacher or the cost of the instruction. They, we kind of all went there. I was shocked though, when I looked at support services. We only, we're the lowest. On any school they have. So when you look at the percentage of total. Gross or, uh, general fund expenditures, support services as a percentage of that, we're only at twenty-six percent. Versus everyone else is like way above us. What? Versus everyone else is like way above us. What? I don't, how come?
No, I think a big part of that probably is. I'm gonna say that we're more efficient, but we, you know, you have. Most of these districts, you probably have a superintendent, a businessman, you probably have a lot of the same positions we have now. Because support services also include your business office, your principals, your.
So the leadership.
Yes, the school, you know, all your administrative services as well. So, you know. That as a bigger budget could create a smaller percentage as far as, you know.
Does that include the like the parent educators as well?
No, they would be under instructional.
Oh, they're over there.
Yes, you, yeah, you got past support services and just supporting students. You know, the business office is considered supporting students. The transportation department is considered supporting students. Um so all of those services, which, you know, when we have a larger budget. Larger districts can sometimes be more efficient in how we do that kind of stuff, so.
Okay, yeah.
I don't say we're the most efficient district, but, you know, when we have one superintendent and most districts even smaller than us have a superintendent, a director of that. Just because whether you're eight hundred kids or whether you're twenty eight hundred kids, you still need those positions.
It's interesting, we get some economies of scale.
Yes, yes, economies of scale was probably a better word than efficient scale. Yep.
No, that's perfect. Thank you.
You put this number two, these upcoming capital projects and funding. So we know a good bit about the roof project, the classroom renovations, we're working on that, and the capital reserve fund, we've already talked about exactly.
Yeah, the roof project is actually on the agenda for approval tonight. And the high school renovation, I think the schedule for near architects do have a, um if we. Move forward, that will have approval on that at the end of March.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anything for the good of you one? Hearing none, thank you very much.
Dr. Shaver is obviously gonna be with us tonight. Who needs Dr. Shaver's backup?
Oh, I'll be, I'll be happy to do it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so we'll start out with the um AI policy and education. And I I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I I don't, I mean, I don't see anything wrong with the policy, but I'm confused as to the matrix.
This is the matrix?
Yeah, this, like how?
So this would be what the teachers would use before they assign any uh any activity in their lesson.
Okay.
That um to tell the to clearly communicate to the students what the expectation is for the use of AI. So so no one can say why I didn't know. So the teacher would start a lesson, hey, today we're gonna talk about, you know, ways to reduce the budget you can use. This will be a level one AI. Project, and they can go onto ChatGPT or some other approved thing, and they can type in there, what are some ways we might be able to to reduce a budget? And it'll spit out a couple of things, and that's perfectly legitimate, because the teacher wanted them to maybe generate some ideas using AI. Now, if they have AI write the whole paper for them about how they're gonna, then the teacher would call that academic integrity violation. And basically ding them for it, you know, either on grades or whatever the the code of conduct says.
Okay, so does this go across the board, subject matters and and grade levels in the high school?
That would be in all, and we're gonna try to do this in all grade levels, because the kids is.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, they'll go all the way down.
Subjects that.
Yes, ma'am. That's my understanding, yeah.
Does the plagiarism software that we use, does it catch AI?
Yes.
Like turn it in, those kind of things.
Supposedly.
Really?
So it will, it will tell you that it's probable that it's it was generated by AI. We tested it a little bit. It's it's pretty accurate. It's not a hundred percent accurate. So I would never come to you and say, we need to, you know. You know, throw this kid out of school because they definitely cheated. If the kid was swearing that they didn't use it, but but it's good enough. They at least have a conversation. Did you use this? And most times it didn't admit it. But yeah, so it does have some predictability about it.
I wonder.
Okay, so we also probably have a program that picks up plagiarism in the different papers. So how does that work with AI? Like, if it's AI, then it, is it plagiarism?
Yes, if they, if it's, if they use AI outside the parameters that the teacher has set. And the turnitindotcom says this was most likely generated by artificial intelligence.
Right.
Then they could be dinged for academic integrity violations.
And this isn't being used right now, of course, but this might also be something that evolves as we get into this deeper.
It's gonna have to.
Yeah.
And it's gonna be, this this, as AI is progressing, it is progressing so quickly that it's hard to keep up with. This is probably the first of several iterations of this tool and and a policy that we're gonna bring to you. Um, you know, there's some really interesting presentations. We just recently heard a presentation. In fact, uh some of the students who went to the health occupations presentation today at Lenape Tech. Uh a professor from Pitt was there to explain how generative AI and predictive AI are coming together and. Like, really, that's like, like Skynet Terminator stuff, where they're gonna like take over the world. So keeping humans at the on in the driver's seat is really important. So um we're gonna, as this continues to to progress, we're gonna have to stay with it, you know, so. It's gonna be challenging a couple of years, I think.
Just be glad you're not in the classroom.
Oh, I agree. I agree. Um now, before we move on, does anybody have anything else to say? Good.
I do have something to say.
Please, Steve.
Uh sure. First of all, thanks for the opportunity to come here and present some information on this policy proposal. Um in October, we did it in service day, and I have to give credit to Mr. Rudy. Sat down and we looked at not so much as the, you know, the ethical, moral aspects of AI, but instead. How could AI be used to help teachers on instructional tasks? So we had a service day, and what we did is we came up with, I don't know, a dozen or so prompts, everything from. How can you create a lesson plan and differentiate to, hey, here's an exam, a letter of recommendation, et cetera, et cetera, that AI can do. AI is a very, very powerful tool. But in in some ways, it's it's only as good as you engineer the prompt. And, uh, you know, there's a lot of learning that's available in engineering prompts, teaching students how to ask the right questions. AI will give you the answer. It's not always the best answer.
It'll give you a answer.
It will give you a answer.
I've seen it some in 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 my profession, and we're getting um jumped back. And some of our consultants are using it to, and, you know, we also need to get a beam that's three times oversized, and you know it's wrong.
And the, I think a challenge in using an AI to get the best possible response is to be able to construct the best possible. And I think there's a lot of learning opportunities in that, and I think in teaching students how to research correctly. To get the information, I think, is a is a is a big step for that. Uh, we looked at the PSP policy eighty one point five one. Uh, next, we had. That policy, but also wanted wanted to shout out to Aaron, Susan Griffiths, Stacy Eisenberg, and one other member of the tech team. Come and did a two-session training with our teachers, because as you imagine, there are a lot of questions about AI. They did a really nice job of saying, hey, these are the features, uh, these are the cautions. These are the, these are the steps you can build into your system. And there was a lot of practice with our teachers to be able to see how indeed AI can be used in a classroom. So it's very helpful. Um, we formed a committee to take a look at the PSP policy eight one point eight one five point one. And we looked over that, and that's the policy you have, to give some input on that. And it's a very comprehensive policy. And one of the question was, wow, what is in the AI policy? Could it indeed fit in our existing user agreement? Parts of it can, but we thought it's a, it's a new newer concept, and it deserves attention unto itself. So our recommendation is, let's let's go with this policy.
Did you use AI to rate the policy?
Actually, if you asked to, if you asked to, if you asked to prom, give a Wade McQueen teacher observation, it doesn't, just like he would.
Soon.
I will tell you.
Gotta train it first.
Mr. Seabird, I'm glad you brought that up, because I asked the teacher in our PCIT department if I could use his observation. And then upload Danielson's framework for effective teaching. And identify citations within the narrative observation. Uh, identify to what degree each of those domains or components were met, and then also give suggestions. There was. And so it was a great compliment to supplement to the job that we do. And and that's what we looked at, you know, it is a tool. I also asked AI in the in the first in service, can AI replace teachers? Because you imagine, you could imagine, and said no.
Well, that's what the cyber school tried to do. They applied to to have AI do the teaching. Um, at the same time, I'm old enough that I remember no, no calculators. And the controversy about whether we could use calculators on the tests, and then the calculators, we couldn't use them on the SATs and then could. You know, eventually, eventually they became, we figured out how to use them. Um, and and somehow, whether we're still getting along, you know. I I my assumption is AI is going to be a similar event, or figure out how not to ruin life, but to make it better. And I really like having a calculator now.
The the internet, search engines, electronic curriculum, curriculum resources are all ready to be used. This goes out and gathers them and puts them, puts them together. So it could be a tool, because what you save your non-instructional time, it's not time you're able to give to students directly. So I think there there's a benefit in that regard. However, uh, we needed to, you know, put together a committee, and I just wanna wanna say Randy O'Neil, our our coordinator this evening, he's. He's on this committee, Kayla Stewart for special education, Elisey for English, Brian Schreier, because he's teaching a computer science class next year. That will be talking and teaching about AI. Joy Dress of Science, Jennifer Jennifer Ruckovich, Dr. Ruckovich. She's the one who put together this matrix. There are best practices out on the internet that you can find. But she saw some some improvements that could be made. She put this together for our committee to review. And uh did a really nice job, especially with giving examples.
I knew a teacher did this. No offense.
Um Melissa Naver, Fisher's ideal program, Michael Burding is our dean of students. Uh, imagine he would be dealing with this as they came up. Steve Cochran for our mathematics, Dr. Johnson, operational principal, because that could rise to his level of attention. And Bill Duddy, social studies, as well as administrative intern. So we put this committee together. And our goal was to review policy, to be able to be able to give perspective insights and feedback. That would culminate in a recommendation of a policy. Uh, the committee reviewed the matrix, and these best practice. Levels of integration are out there. We tried to keep it simple. This, uh, as Mr. Han said, would be a standard. Uh, talking about putting posters in classrooms, we get to that point, but there is still more work to do. In the policy, it talks about training of staff, faculty, and students, and we wanna be able to be very deliberate with this. Um, and so that, like any of the other tools that we have, electronic or otherwise. Everybody has a good starting point and understanding on how this can enhance learning. So that's.
Yeah, I think that's the key. Enhancing the learning is the thing. This is here. Whether you know or not, a lot of you use AI and you don't even realize you're using it. If you use Siri or Alexa, or if you Google something now. There, what's there is like a Gemini. Gemini will say, this is the answer. You don't know if it's the answer. That's an AI bot telling you what the answer is. So you have to go look even further. So. This is a really important thing that we need to teach our young people about. Why it is, how it works, why, when it's appropriate to use it, because it can enhance learning. But when you're ready for it, it's like, it's like, like you said, it was a tool. It's like a chainsaw. If you know how to use it and you're ready for it. You can make sure it work, and if not, you're not ready for it, you can cut your arm off. You know what I mean? So. It's a knowing the the benefits and knowing the risks are important. So we have to be very purposeful and explicit about how we. Get this across to all of our kids and our teachers.
And and another another place we're trying to do is useful, um, is Lincoln, which is our data warehouse. And Dr. Mike Floyd, representative, and and I know that. That companies are incorporating their own AI systems within their websites. And, you know, one of the, one of the uh great advantages we have is is that we have a lot of data. One of our challenges, what do we do with it? How do we use it? So Dr. Mike Floyd, to go back to Lincoln and say, can you, are are you looking at some type of AI system? So that when we get the student's data. That Lincoln is now being able to say, these are the best practices, these are the best approaches for those students. Because you can really tailor um your your outcomes with AI.
I I didn't see anything wrong with the the uh policy. Like you said, it's a big one policy. Did anybody else find anything that they would wanna change? Should we, and maybe this isn't even appropriate to reference in a policy, should we reference that there will be a matrix in the policy or not?
That'll be an attack.
Well, I think it is referenced.
I did see that it was.
Where was that? I think it says that the teachers will identify the proper use of AI in their lessons.
Okay, that's good.
And that's where that.
I was looking, yeah, okay, so we don't wanna refer to attribute the matrix.
And these items can be included as an attachment to the policy.
That's cool. That's great. Any other input or questions? This is the first read.
I was about to say, this is the first read, so we're not, we're not proving this tonight.
No.
Sure. Yeah, yeah, get some time to look over everything.
One last thing, we we plan to have a standing committee. So that as these changes and evolutions occur in AI, that we can respond.
Great. Well, we appreciate all the work you did and your team did.
Yeah, I like that you formed that committee, yeah.
Yeah, that's smart. Okay. So we move on to the next one. Sure. Thank you so much. Uh, the next one is the uh. Yeah, I see.
I thought you were trying to use AI. I thought you were trying to use AI and it wasn't working.
Uh, okay. Anybody?
Yeah, employment of district staff, the last time we brought this forward, it was a discussion before we're ready to have a first read. We wanted some changes made. We made the language changes that were asked. Um also, um, so, you know, it's it's ready for a first read if you want. Um, I checked with the solicitor on this, and, you know, the solicitor says that, um, you know, this is. It's, there's nothing illegal about what you do, right? This is uh, this is something you can do, is the way he put it, right? So, um, so that's would be the the approach we'd take for professional staff. At your place should be the current procedure we use for hiring. Yeah, that's for the coaches and extra duty, extra pay staff. They all fall under a different section of the contract. You know, that is what we are using, we have been using since for two or three years now, when uh. The board asked us to come up with a policy and procedure for that. That's what we currently use. The the question was raised, should we have those people in here too? I would tell you that having all of our teams bring you three names for every single position that we hire in a year is. Way too much work for them and way too much work for you. However, if you wanna look at that and consider it and see if you wanna make changes to that, I can make changes to that. We don't need a policy to make any changes to that. Um, so I just wanted you to be aware that there is a procedure we follow. Uh, so that's really it. So if you have no issues, if no one has any issues with the current language in that adapted policy, we can have the first read tonight. And if you wanna change anything with the extracurricular, we can always have that discussion.
So the extracurricular is not on tonight at all. That's just something.
No, that's just, I just wanted you guys to be aware of what it is.
I was advocating that we actually include the extracurricular as part of our policy, hey, Harry, that they hardly, a different procedure. But a clear procedure.
And if that works, I mean, we can put that as an AR. An administrative regulation. So that is a administrative regulations or things that go along with policies. We're actually gonna talk about it here a little bit, so I'm glad you asked the question. They are the the guidelines that are. They are the the guidelines that our administrators use to implement policy with fidelity. And it, so it's an attachment or a procedure basically that goes along with.
And why wouldn't you make it part of the policy?
Oh, we we can.
I mean, is there any reason not to?
Uh, no, no, I mean, as long as you're okay with this, what we wanted to avoid was having. Being forced to bring three names to every single hire, because there's, we hire hundreds and hundreds of people.
See is that there's a, there's a procedure in place that we all agreed to that that you can, that you could. Uh, accomplish. Okay. And so we're not, you know, we're not blindsided, um, and you follow the procedure and everything's cool.
Sure. And if you're okay with what's written, then we can definitely conclude that.
Okay. So I think, is this the first time I saw this?
Possibly. You want to take it, read it, we don't.
Can we take it home and?
Hundred percent, yeah.
To to your point though, Rob, I think there are certain positions. Teachers, principals, administrators, that we may want. To be a little more um, emphatic as or as as practical.
Correct. When you hire a teacher, you're making a two and a half million dollar investment.
And longevity usually too.
If there may be other positions where it's either not practical or the impact may not be as great.
Correct.
And and I'm okay if those, um, if you have lots of flexibility in in doing, in doing it that way. So I think there's maybe two different groups who want to look at.
This also needs to cover the academic, the academic, all the extracurriculars, not just athletics.
It does. That should be all extracurricular. So if there's a drama person, we follow that same procedure. If there's. Now, if the drama person is there and has done a fine job and there's no reason to replace that drama position. We will give them the the IAE, the collective bargaining agreement, first choice. So we just will reapprove that person. We don't go through the whole hiring process. It shouldn't say that there. If not, we can tighten it up.
I think that needs to be there. So it's spelled out because I was looking at maybe in there in in the general type of thing.
No, I mean, it's it's a heck of a start.
Yeah, take that home, chew on it for a while, bring it back. We can have that ready for the second read.
The board wants to see three candidates. There's, if you could put a provision in there like the clause that said, unless the board asks otherwise.
Yeah, we can do that too.
I mean, just up to three, up to three candidates and gives us the leadway of asking.
Problems we've had have been that we didn't remember who else was applying. It was, you know, like this last discussion we never.
True.
That became an issue for us.
Doug, I think you wanted to finish something.
No, I was just gonna say, I think if you put like in number seven, up to three candidates, so that gives the leadway of. If the board wants three candidates, they could say three, but if we say up to three candidates.
But we we do, that's that's in-person interview. So that's, so we do a screening interview for these. So we'll go through. If we have twenty candidates, we don't have time to give full interviews of twenty. So we might do a screening interview, get that twenty down to nine. Or in this case, three, we take the top three, we interview those top three. That's what that's saying.
Okay. So I wonder if you only have two candidates apply for the position. Okay.
Often times for a lot of these, we only have one.
No, that's what I mean.
But when you have one or two candidates, you have a reason for that. We have, we, we did all this stuff and we only got one application.
Sometimes and sometimes there's only, yeah.
Yeah. Well, and that's what we want to hear. Okay. You did everything that you were supposed to do and you only got two applications and.
Yes, sir. Yep.
Okay. And and a head coach is a different hire than an assistant coach.
Well, the assistant coach is the head coach is hired. We stay out of that.
Okay, right. And is that in this?
I don't know if that's spelled out exactly. All I did was.
Exactly should be spelled out.
Okay, then we can add that.
And again, you know, if we quantify this, Chris won't be upset.
Sounds good. So if you don't mind taking that back, send me any suggestions you have. We can tighten that up. And then if you guys are okay with it, we'll add it as an attachment to the policy and just up update the policy whenever we get.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, I'm just saying, we're like, I think what Walter was saying with the high level, or it's like the teachers, the head coaches, the administration, that's, I think that's. What we would like to see those three or less candidates.
Even head coaches, you're gonna have, we have a whole bunch of head coaches.
Uh, or the top three or um, like the high level, not every. You know, employee that comes to the district. I think that's what we were trying to say, right?
You know, I mean, it just depends on the the position itself. It could be. Could be a head coach of a position where you only get two applicants or one applicant. It's like cheer, by cheerleading, I mean, cheerleading, whatever that is by, we're lucky to get one. We're happy to get one whenever that happens.
You said you could, for example, good point. You can put in it, we can put something in that says unless requested by the board. So if there is a high profile one, you guys can say, bring us three candidates. You can bring us your kids. You're not going to want three candidates for the rifle coach.
Okay, right.
I mean, like, you know, we're going to get real far in the weeds.
But but the basketball coach, my wrestling football.
Mind that the solicitor said that this is, there's nothing illegal about this.
That's right.
He will say that this is not.
And I'd like to know, I'd like to know what other like districts that we compete against, do they have something like that? I'd like to see, maybe look at what they have.
I can ask you. Okay. So while the first read, we'll try to solve any of these other problems by the second read, next board meeting, and we can approve it then.
Yes. Yeah, that's good. The the uh, policy or the guidelines, we're just going to email what we we think.
For this one, yeah, for this one.
That's not going to be anything on the agenda tonight.
No, and we can just update it. When you think that that procedure is good enough to go on the policy, we can just bring it up and do an add it, whatever.
Would you send this, we send this to the board?
Yeah, I'll send it to the electronic. Yes. Sounds good.
And we're going to add it to the policy?
You can't add to the policy.
I think that's another discussion area though.
Yeah.
It could be very complicated.
It could be very much.
You know.
Yes. The the solicitor would say that you.
The policies you have, the harder it is.
Correct. That's the, that's the solicitor saying you can do this. He would not recommend.
We can have more discussions about hiring coaches, anything else.
Really?
We get blindsided. Coach Curry shoots in, we have to hire somebody on Thursday. I'd like to have these policies where they're where they're qualified. And we can modify that, but for God's sakes.
I know. Okay. But that's not all, we're not all in agreement with that because I feel like. Putting that on to our already established employment of district staff policy. Is just going to muddy the waters.
And and we have an athletic director.
Things we have. How's it going? I don't know.
We, I mean, we have an athletic director that we pay money. I mean, we have to, I mean.
We pay money to the superintendent too. So why do we bother with it at all?
That we pay them good money to come up with the decisions. If they make a mistake on hiring, then it's their job on the line.
But it's us.
Well, my only, my only point is that to put it on to this policy, I'm not so sure. I'm not saying I don't want to do it, but I I need to digest the guidelines.
And we can.
I haven't even, I mean, I'm, I'm running this meeting. I didn't look at the.
Okay, so we're gonna do that.
Okay.
And also, you know, this is a study policy now. You've never seen this policy, but it's. Um, of the, of how, of how they're doing.
Correct. But it's not a policy.
Yes, not a policy. It's a guideline.
Well, we're talking, we're being broadcast.
Yeah, I, and and there is no. The, what you are approving for the employment of the, is what we're following anyway. It's just tightening up a little bit of language. So we don't have a deadline here. It's not like we're just being neglected in the meantime. So if you want to take. Two meetings to get this ironed out, we can absolutely do that.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay. So you might want to not.
He, he does want the post. He wants the the three names in, in the policy, for sure.
Okay.
Dr. Shaffer, I mean.
Right, right.
At least that's what he indicated last meeting. I don't want to speak for him, but that's. You know. But we can, we can absolutely wait.
Because if we approve the policy tonight, that's, that's.
It's only the first read.
It's a first read.
First read.
So that we have time to add that.
Correct. I can bring back the second read whenever you want.
And then, you know, the language that we use, if we're going to make it part of the policy, has to be language that's. Established, like we don't just write these policies, we use the different sources.
You use AI to help us write.
Yeah, we do. We take a lot of P S B A and we're very fortunate. We have, yes.
Right.
And our solicitor.
I'd like to see some other districts that we are comparable to us that we compete against. See what they have as their policy, if they have one.
Yes, sir. We can get that. So we'll do the first read tonight before we approve this officially with the second read. I'll get you that information. And you guys can give me any feedback you want on that document. Okay?
Right. Because a one-page paper you gave us tonight, I didn't really agree that that's hardly a policy.
Well, that's just, no, that's just, those are the directions I gave Dan Roan and Wade McWhaney a few years ago to say, hey, do it like this.
Right.
I think this was the first time we all saw this.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's, yes, actually, yeah, most of it.
And as far as that discussion goes, being a policy, that I I'm not ready tonight to have that discussion.
Sure.
You are, I know. Okay, good. I appreciate you.
I thought Jim was pretty firm. So is he going to draft something at committee other than this?
No, I think Jim wanted me to bring back this. I made the changes that that. Dr. Schaefer, Mr. Harley asked for last time. That policy reflects those changes.
Right.
The only thing that I didn't change was I didn't add the coaching and all those things because I wanted to talk to Ron.
Right.
Ron's recommendation was there's nothing illegal about what you're doing.
Right.
Which. So yes, absolutely. So. So Dr. with your permission, then we'll do the first read. We won't bring back the second read until you're satisfied and the committee.
Well, everybody's satisfied. Wait, you're on the committee?
Which committee? I'm on all the committees.
So you didn't want that.
Okay, no, I didn't.
Okay, here we go. Um, one of the things is the debt management policy will be up tonight for approval, correct? And everybody's read that, I hope.
It was, yeah.
I know, I'm gonna get to that.
I thought you were.
I still have time. Ooh, wait. Thank you for your input.
We have three things in seven minutes. I can do it if you.
I'm gonna do it. Okay, here we go. Uh, I don't, um, I, I mean, we've been given the information on this. If you want to say more about it.
Yes, ma'am. The policy is good. The policy is in line with the law. Our, what we wrote needs to be changed a little bit to tighten it up. So I just put what we're gonna put on the topic of our board meeting into there for your information.
Right.
Just to be more more strict compliance with the policy, that's all.
Right. So you're aligning what we wrote, what we write on every agenda with our policy that already exists.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any questions about that? Okay. So let's go on to the reading interns.
Sorry, I do have a question. You're only going to put paragraph B on the agenda.
Yes, paragraph B will be on the agenda. Correct.
Right.
Yes, yes, sir. Uh, the reading interns, number four, this is the proposed contract from I U P. This is one of those. Where we, I wanted to bring it to your attention before I just put her on the board agenda. Typically, we would discuss this at at academic agenda, but they just sent it to me last week. So we missed that one. So I got to put it on this one. Because they need to know by March whether or not, or how many we're going to request.
Right.
This is something we have been using Esther's money to pay for, but it was in the contract. It was in our budget before Esther's.
Right.
It's a longstanding partnership with I U P. It has a lot of benefits. And a lot of the costs, when you see the cost, you're like, it's expensive. However, they offset a sub almost every single day. They, you know, so there are, there are savings built in there too that are not seen. So we're requesting five. That would be two at each K three and one of the four fives next year. Um, which we believe that is is very doable. Um, and, you know, with your permission, we will approve that contract. And again, this is just in line with our conference of plan where, you know, literacy is our number one initiative. We need to put our resources into literacy. So these are basically full-blown teachers, full-blown baby reading specialists, really. That are training with our people, working, they help us with testing, they help us with data analysis, they help us with, you know, uh, interventions. For students and they help us cover classes when we're short. So they are a tremendous asset to our teams. Um, they are expensive though, you know, so I just want to make sure that we're okay.
We had this conversation before about the benefits and all that. And we had Erin join in on that conversation.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, and and it makes me feel good that you all paid for this before, before the Esther's money. Does anybody have anything to say or any objections?
I'd like to know why we don't have um, any, any support in the junior high or the high school with this thing.
Well, hopefully if we do our job, they shouldn't need as much in reading intervention for the junior, but they do, there's still some kids that have, we probably could. I haven't looked at it.
I would, I would, I would advocate that that you look at that. Um, and if there is. Um, if we can't put another um, expert in the junior high, then we do that. We gotta, we gotta catch up the kids that haven't, haven't. Cut the mustard yet.
So, uh, Tom, are you suggesting six instead of five?
If there's, if there's six good candidates.
Right.
Okay, I would, I would certainly advocate. This is, this is a bargain.
I agree. I agree. It's a good partnership too.
And if we, if we interview them, usually we, we have five or six to look at. If we have six really good ones, we, we can bring it back to you and ask for another one.
Please.
For sure.
So we'll leave the motion at five for tonight. And then if you have another candidate, we'll reconsider.
Or should I say five to send?
Um, the proposed contract says five.
Okay, that's right. Right, right.
Okay. I mean, number five is is another asked by myself and a niece. Uh, we talked about administrative regulations a little bit beforehand. So administrative regulations are the things that go with all the policy changes that come. Um, fast and furious. I mean, I think you guys approved like, you know, sixty-seven different policies last year and updated them. Which you're going to do every year. Um, the ARs that go with those. Also should be updated, but it's difficult to keep up with. Our ARs have not been really overhauled since 2014. Mike Vugovic started to do this when he was here, then he left. And it's really left undone. Now that I've got my sea legs, so to speak, it needs revisited.
Right.
Um, P S B A, for the level that we pay for, we get all the policy recommendations and the legalities behind it and why it is, um, which is very, very helpful. For another $3,700, they will give us basically the blank templates. No, they're not blank, the recommended templates. For all the policies updated so that it makes our work easier. This is something where if we had this, this summer, Jared and Niece and I can lock ourselves in a room and knock out a lot of these policies and hopefully. Have everything updated and up to speed. If not, we could do it, but it might take us a year or more to get caught up. So. This $3,700 is really a selfish one for me, Jared and uh, Niece and Sean, uh, eventually that. Are, you know, to do this work more quickly and efficiently.
And more currently, I would assume that they give you what is current too.
Correct. And now, yeah, when we pay for that, they'll update it. So every time we update a policy, it's automatically updated with the recommended ARs. So thank you. So I appreciate that.
Anybody have any input on that or any, okay. All right. Is that my last thing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I have a question for this page because everybody likes to get me, give me advice. When I take, uh, I don't think Jim's going to join us. So when I take over the policy and personnel committee. Which ones can I combine and which ones can I?
Anything that has someone's name, you have to read separately, take out.
Okay.
Um, but everything else you can take as a consent agenda.
And I believe, how about the substitute list? We don't usually read that name.
No, I think you can just take that as consent. Yep.
Okay. So only one I read.
The only one is what, six point?
If I have an objection, I want to have a separate rule of six two.
Right.
I'll tell you that and we're taking out that.
Okay, great.
You, you just skip over that.
Great, great. Okay. Are you going to have an objection?
You know.
No, that's good. That's.
I know what you'd be upset with me if I do.
Oh, I never get upset with you.
Good question. Consent agendas, yes.
Tom, thank you for your.
So we can have consent agenda.
So the consent agenda, other than if there's a name, all you have to do is say, I. Move that the, that all items.
Either six point one through six point seven are taken as a consent agenda and if those are favored, yes.
But I get to read my report first. I don't think I'm.
But we can do that basically other than six point six that has a name. All the other ones do not have any names.
Yes, sir.
Six point six, right. The substitute list does, but he said I don't have.
So academic extracurricular, buildings and grounds and audit and finance can all be.
It's just you guys are seeing the names in your agenda, but if the public doesn't have them, there's one.
Well, we see blanks. That's, we have a separate, yeah, we have a separate sheet, but that's the only one that has to be outside of consent.
The substitute name there probably should head of that, so they can just take it as consent.
I'm finished.
Okay, excellent work. Thank you, thank you.
Seven o'clock, see?
Seven o'clock.
Thank you.